International.
What are all those, are they gonna sing carols out there? Is that what's going on?
I think that it's the Boy Scouts. They go tour the police stuff.
Oh.
That's what it is. At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, December 12th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting to order. Brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is roll call. Pid here.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Emma.
Here.
Sharnell.
Here.
Choblam.
Daniels.
Yeah.
And Lundell.
Here.
That brings us to the third item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Price and a second by Ms. Sharnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number four, which is the approval of the minutes from the November 14th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting.
I didn't see them. I got a lady mail and I couldn't open it.
I got mine this morning.
Yeah, I got, I got it this morning, too.
Late, late, late on Friday. I'll apologize.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Ms. Sharnell and a second by Mr. Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number five, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. I don't believe we have anybody here. So then we'll move on to the public hearing. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the conditional use permit variance for Dudley's Pizza.
Ron will assist with the lighting. Thank you. Recall at the last meeting, there was a scheduled public hearing from Dudley requesting a conditional use permit, which would allow him, if approved, to put a residential unit on the backside or the north side, if you will, of his existing building that he owns downtown. And within our ordinance, we allow mixed use. We allow a combination of residential and commercial in a downtown building, subject to the issuance of a conditional use permit. So Dudley has applied for that. You held the public hearing at the last meeting. We recessed that to tonight because one other issue that came up was with respect to his interest in having the residential unit being built on the Main Street level, the same level, if you will, as Mill Street. And under the ordinance, that is not allowed unless a variance is issued. So in conversations with the city attorney, his recommendation was that we schedule a public hearing on the variance to allow us to look at this, both as a conditional use permit, as well as a variance to the standards, which would allow Dudley to pursue the project that he's proposed to develop here. So a little bit of zoning between conditional use permit and variance. And tonight, it's a continued hearing on the conditional use permit and then a new hearing on the variance. And as you saw in the pack, we've combined both those procedures into, into one resolution and one public hearing tonight. We reviewed at the last meeting some specifics with regards to how the proposed addition would sit on the property and the lot itself, the existing building. And tonight, I wanted to show you a little bit more closely the specific plan, so you fully understand what it is that's being proposed here, because it is a little bit different and it's fairly unique, in my estimation. So the slide that I've got up on the overhead right now is a blown-up floor plan of the unit. This is north, going this way, south to Mill Street, going this way. This is the existing building, going back to Mill Street. This is the north wall of the existing building. And below this proposed apartment is an existing garage. And you'll see that on a subsequent slide. But I want to give you an idea of at least what's being proposed here, so you have a sense of the, of the residential unit itself. This is a two-bedroom unit, again on the north side, with windows going to the north. This is an upper-level unit, built on the end of the existing building. And here's stairways that then go down to the lower level of the, of the lot and then to the north, to the alley. Two bedrooms, living area here, kitchen here, and a bathroom here. This is an existing window that will be removed on the north end of the existing building. That'll be removed and a built-in cabinet here as well. And this is a blocked-in, assumedly former window opening, that would be opened up and create the, the door and access onto the main level of, of the apartment. Coming out of the unit into what I will call a foyer area that separates the commercial to the, to the south and the residential to the north. This is a stairway system, secondary egress, if you will, for the apartment that gets you out into this foyer area and to be able to walk down these stairs into the lower level and access into the garage itself. So again, it's, it's the second level in the back, but the main level to the front in a split-level proposal that's, that's being requested here. This maybe gives you a little bit better idea of what, how the floor plan melds into the existing building. Here again is the existing north face of Dudley's building with garages down below. The window, window that I mentioned earlier that will be removed with built-ins on the interior side of the, of the residence. And then here's the blocked-in area that would be opened up and actually would be the door from the building into the, the addition. This is the north end of the existing addition. You can see the garage door replacing here. These are the windows in the, both of the bedrooms and then the access out and the stairway down to the lower level, which again, then goes to the north out to the alley. So give you an idea of what the north end of the, of the building looks like. In a cutaway view, to again help explain this, here again is that foyer area that I mentioned. Let's call it a seven to eight-foot wide area here. This way to the south is actually the restaurant, Dudley's Restaurant and kitchen area. This is the foyer area, the access, if you will, to the apartment, as well as being able to get down to the lower level on these stairs. And on the lower level is, is a garage and, and storage area here. And then this is the, the apartment unit itself. So I said, it's, it's a fairly unique set of circumstances in the, in the downtown and, and this proposal is, is looking to utilize some of the available undeveloped space in the backside, the north side of Dudley's property, to add the two-bedroom residential unit. And again, in our ordinances to allow something like this, it does necessitate both a conditional use permit and a variance. Dudley, if you'd like to say anything else that I've missed or help explain this, I'd certainly give you an opportunity to do that.
You pretty much summed everything up. I've got some, the existing garages that are there right now. I've got some issues with those where, some water issues and, and things that I need to, to clean up with those. And I just thought, you know, you might as well make it look a little, a little bit nicer back there when you're over in the parking lot for, from the library. You know, it's, it's not, those garages, they don't look real, real nice. So I'd like to fix that up, make it look a little better back there. So get additional storage room.
I have a question.
Is the, where the garage is now, is that equal to where the garage is in?
It's about...
As we see him now, or is it farther, is it farther to the north?
Maybe three feet, something like that.
So three feet from the garage now?
It's not built out to the alley. There's still a...
No, no, no. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
How much of that space you're gonna use towards the alley? And you have enough room to back out of that garage and not hit the other building?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And that, it's, you know, really, the downstairs, I want for storage, supplies, deliveries and that kind of stuff for the shop.
So there'll just be one garage door?
Yeah. And the service door.
So that'll clean all that up back there.
Yeah.
I think just to help explain...
And then really, the, the other door into that foyer, now that's just to, to make sure that you have two exits for, in the event of a fire, right?
Mostly, yeah. Yep. But then, and we could get access from the restaurant downstairs if we need to.
Right, right, right. But as far as the apartment part is concerned, it's mostly just the...
Yeah, they're not, it's not, yeah, it's not the one that they're gonna be using.
Yep, right.
Yep, exactly.
Do we require fireproof doors then?
We had a court analysis done, so they've got fireproof doors.
Yeah, they have to, don't they? Yeah. Okay.
I was just gonna mention, it's roughly 28 feet east to west and about 32 feet north-south here. So it's about 32 by 28, roughly, the addition.
Mm-hmm. Is the city considering that alley a one-way?
I don't know if it is or not.
I would consider it a no-way, but...
Yeah, well, going up that hill there...
It, it, when you come out of the library, it's one way to the...
Yeah, the library is just one-way and that's why I was thinking...
It's not meant to take a right there, but out of the library. But I don't know if it's marked such.
I don't think it gets enough traffic.
No.
No, I just...
The difference since the library redid all their stuff, it's barely gets any use anymore.
I know it's not labeled, so it's just...
It's one-way when you're using it.
Whoever gets, going one-way gets... I got it, I got it. It's cool.
Well, and it doesn't seem like we have anybody else from the public here that's opposed. Does anyone else have any comments or suggestions or...
I think anything we can do to improve downtown, we'd be stupid not to.
Well, and really, it's, it is kinda nice to be able to have some apartments, I think, downtown. We've got a few above those shops and stuff along Main Street. So it, it fits, you know? It does fit.
It's in the back and there is definitely a water problem back there that needs to be fixed, so...
Well, and if, if they can get the water problem addressed when they're building, that's the best time.
Is that coming off that cement wall, water? Or underneath it? You've got that barrier wall there to the east. Is that where the water's coming from?
Not, well, it's just, it's just...
Comes off the building.
Yeah, off the building and then...
Mm-hmm. It's a slope roof to the north.
Yeah.
Being that the addition back there is done in the 40s, I'm sure that that has something to do with it.
Probably later than that. Probably earlier than that.
Yeah.
Well, to get a building permit, I mean, all the fire and egress and all that stuff is taken care of anyway with that, so...
Yeah, and I've, I've done a court analysis and stuff and been talking with the county kinda hasn't been going.
So, yeah, so we really don't need to worry that much about any of that stuff, so, yeah.
I think it sounds like a, a good idea.
Yes.
In fact, do, would anyone like to, well, I suppose we probably need to close that public hearing first.
Close the public hearing and then consider the resolution while Dudley's still here and then we can move on to the second hearing.
Yep. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing for the conditional use permit variance for Dudley's Pizza. And then let's go ahead and, and actually do a vote here on that resolution, 2016-7 Dudley's Pizza. I'd like to make a motion that we, we approve the resolution, 2016-7.
Second.
I've got a motion by myself and a second by Mr. Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, you're all done.
Thank you.
That brings us to the next public hearing, which is the preliminary plat for Southview Acres.
Thanks, Dudley.
Good luck.
Thoughts? We're good.
Yeah, we might have to get them all down here to be able to, to see.
You might want this one. That one's came off that. You got what you need there?
You hear me snoring? Give me a bump, will ya?
Public hearing tonight on the preliminary plat for the proposed winter addition, which I find very ironic, that seems like a good name for this addition today. This is approximately 14 acres, a little bit more than 14 acres of property. This is the support center for Midwest Importers, the office showroom for Midwest Importers. Here's the, the new roundabouts in County 24, Mayo Hospital sitting up the hill here. And this is the proposed site, excuse me, of the Grand Stay Hotel. And that's really the, the primary impetus at this point to move forward with a preliminary plat and the subdivision of, of the 14-plus acres. It won't be exclusively subdivided just for the, the hotel. I'll get into that in a minute. But in order to facilitate development of the hotel and really to kind of fix up kind of a long history of existing conditions on those properties, Southview Acres Real Estate Company, the owners, are proposing the plat. And with a preliminary plat requires a public hearing, obviously, and your recommendation to the city council. So that's the project area. And one thing that goes hand-in-hand with the project area is the proposed Grand Stay Hotel. Here again is, is part of the area that's subject to the preliminary plat. There's the support center, the office showroom, the old Victorian restored home used to sit down in, in this area. Here's the new 63rd Avenue North. The roundabouts are just down in, in this area and then Highway 52 over here. In red is a new proposed road, about 600 feet in length, coming off of 63rd Avenue. That will be a public street that will be installed to serve not just the hotel location, which is down here, but also, when we get into the preliminary plat, you'll see that there's a lot being created here, as well as a lot being created up in this area. So the new road, while it's being built at this point to serve essentially the, the hotel, in the future, it will also create access for development that could occur here and will occur up in this, in this area.
Said that was the city road?
City road, correct. The preliminary plat itself, I'll start with a little bit wider view, is taking a plat that was approved back in 1974 by the city. And the property owners at that time, it's taking a portion of that plat, and that's primarily in this area that was previously platted. The area off to the west has not been previously platted. That still meets and bounds. And then there's been changes in legal descriptions since 1974. So one thing that the preliminary plat and the final plat will do, it will clean up all the legal descriptions and, and the survey will provide, you know, current conditions of existing lots and, and blocks, which is helpful. Here, in this location, is where Mindot condemned property for the roundabouts on the west side of 52. Here's 52 north-south. And this is the area that Mindot condemned and acquired for the County 24 Improvement Project. And it bisected what was the former plat. So on the south side here, there's actually a piece of property that used to be part of the larger piece that is proposed as Lot 1, Block 2 of the, of the subdivision. So along with the hotel to the north and five lots that are being created there and subdivided, there will also be a lot on the south side, a developable, buildable lot on the south side identified as Block 1 of, excuse me, Lot 1 of Block 2.
And how, how are they planning to serve that lot? Because...
There's an access, as you come around the west, west roundabout, coming south, this goes down towards Avalon.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Mindot left access rights to serve that lot right here. So you'd actually go off the roundabout.
How far is that from the roundabout? 'Cause really, they seem to have a problem with trying to put on-ramps and off-ramps, you know, for, for traffic headed either north or south, right out, you know, here on the highway. And their claim was that it was too close to that south interchange. Well, this is gonna be considerably closer than that.
Here's...
I mean, the speeds are different, too, but I'm just wondering, you know, where that...
They won't be accessing, they'll only access off the frontage road off of Back Street.
Right. Won't be off of 24. You won't have access, Mindot retained access control on the north of the lot. So you'll have to come off of the west roundabout south and, and here. And it's, it's 250 feet just along this platted line and then the roundabout's another 50, 60 feet above that, I suppose, to the north. But, but the only, the only point of access, due to the Mindot condemnation, to, to this lot is, is in this location.
On 63rd, then, right?
On 63rd, yep.
So it'd just be...
No access up there.
Chances are, they probably just wanna have that toward the one edge then of that lot, furthest from the...
Right.
Roundabout, just to give you some separation right there.
Yep.
'Cause I mean, a semi coming out of a roundabout, it's, you know...
Isn't the property right in front of that, towards the highway? That's where the buses are sitting right now, right?
They're down, a little bit down here more. Yep. Down, down in here.
Can you see where all the trees are right here?
Yes, where the trees are. Yep, correct.
Stop, Sandy.
So there's one lot in the plat, south of 24, and then five lots north, including there's a new lot description for the office showroom. There's a, this is staying pretty close to what the existing lot is for the, for the support center. Here's the new lot that I mentioned before that would be created by the plat. Here's another new lot created by the plat. And this is actually where the, where the hotel would, would sit, down on, on Lot 4. So again, in order to facilitate this whole development, including the hotel, the interest of the owners and arguably the city is that this be replatted, that the surveys be cleaned up, and that kind of everything gets readjusted on the heels of what Mindot's project did to this property. Obviously, it changed things considerably in this area. And to react to that, respond to that, in order to serve a, a proposed hotel and get a public road into it, you know, that's part of the street. Alexander Court is identified there. That's part of this project to kind of address existing easements that are, are scattered throughout this property, to, to work with those and, and fix some of the easements that are no longer needed and create some new ones that will be. And to really, I guess, eliminate the, the former, the 1974 plat and clean that up and make it current with existing conditions and, and future development opportunities by creating this two lots. The preliminary plat's been, been proposed.
And does that, does the existing zoning match or do we need to adjust the zoning?
Zoning, zoning is still good. It's all B2 highway commercial zoning across the lot on the south side of, of the roundabouts, as well as on the north side. So that's fine for the hotel and fine for the, the development itself. We did, just for purposes of public hearing, we, we notified Mindot of the hearing. We did get a, a email back from them that they have no objections to the plat. We've also provided the, the preliminary plat to Goodhue County. We haven't received any comments from them, but I'm guessing that there won't be any, any issues with regards to, to Goodhue County here. So haven't heard any, anything else since the notices went out, good, bad, or indifferent with regards to the public hearing, and it doesn't appear as anyone is here tonight. So that's what we have. And again, the hearing is required by the subdivision ordinance. If the commission wants to go ahead with this, you've got a, a draft resolution for your consideration. If you choose to adopt that, that will go to the city council. And I would expect maybe, maybe the January meeting, that we could see a final plat, which would probably include the hotel lot, probably this lot, probably the lot south of, of the roundabouts. And it may or may not include the two existing buildings in this smaller lot. We'll see. But I think the final plat at least would include the, the hotel and probably that vacant lot. So again, the sequence on this is preliminary plat for all of the property, the 14 or so acres, and then the final plat really based on specific lot sales and, and development proposals. So we could see one or two or three final plats in phases of this preliminary plat if, if, if the commission recommends that we proceed, so...
Does, like Midwest, they're building, so they'd have access off that new cul-de-sac there or that new road?
Not necessarily. And here's, here's why, Glenn. The, the financing details for the road right now are property tax abatement from the hotel. The hotel is contributing a lot of the revenue through taxes to pay for this, this road. And then we have an assessment agreement with the property owners for the two vacant lots. We haven't assessed any of that road cost to the Midwest properties. Midwest is leasing from the property owner, and if there was going to be an assessment against Midwest, that would be a negotiation between the, the tenant and the landlord. So at this point, pending what may happen in the future with respect to those properties, we'll determine accessibility of those properties to this road.
Okay. 'Cause I was just wondering, 'cause there's, there's quite a bit of access there and, and they probably get assessed quite a bit and...
Yeah.
Depends on if they say, well, geez.
They, they, they abut their new road clearly. So I mean, they, they will actually come up to the, to the new right-of-way. We've got a 60-foot road proposed. It won't be a 60-foot wide road. It's a 32-foot wide road, so there will be boulevard between the, the curb and gutter and the edge of the, the right-of-way limits. But, but the reason that they're not part of this right now are not just the landlord-tenant relationships, but they also have access from 64th, which is the frontage road.
Okay.
What happens then? They, they get a double whammy, just like a corner lot then, almost?
Well, we, we...
Or did we just work it out?
We, we have, yeah, we, we negotiated an assessment agreement with the landowners for the project. And if the city was going to legally assess and force an assessment, if you will, not through a negotiated assessment agreement, we would go through a whole separate proceedings to do that. And we haven't done that in this instance. So right now, there won't be access by those two lots onto this road. In the future, if access is desired or necessary, there'll have to be a conversation between the city and the landowners to accomplish that.
Do we have sewer and water out that far?
Yes. Sewer and water come down this existing easement, so it kind of bisects this 14 or so acres, which again, was another one of the challenges, to put this whole development plan together.
Is adequate for the...
Yes. Yep. Those are major, major lines. Yep.
It's a, it's a major, yeah.
Yeah. So yes, utilities, sewer and water are available and the hotel will be, the hotel will be connecting into there, yes.
And they are adequate for the hotel.
Yes. Yep, yep.
I don't know if they're trying to break in or break out.
It's future planning commission members.
I was gonna say that.
Well, I think one of them keeps pushing the handicap button.
They're pretty tough. Pretty tough. I don't wanna mess with them.
Any further questions on the, on the plat?
Who, who will be responsible for the intermediate waterway there?
The, the, the waterway right now is within the, the city easement. So we've been responsible for that. And as the engineering for the road is, is finished, there'll be some corrections on that. And we don't expect that to change. If the drainage plan calls for a new drainage path outside of the existing easement, we'll have to deal with that. But right now, there'd be just modifications for the existing flow.
Do you anticipate any runoff problems from the parking lot area that they're gonna put in?
The hotel, from the, from the hotel?
Yeah.
Yeah. The hotel is working on their storm drainage plan and, and the city engineer will review that and approve that plan when it's been submitted. Has not been submitted yet.
So there's a dry, dry creek bed in there, is there?
Yeah, there's an intermediate waterway that comes off the north side of the highways.
Yeah, and there's that, yeah. That's what I'm wondering about, is what's gonna come off that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't want any of that.
There's usually a lot of blacktop when it comes to...
Yeah, there is.
Having, you know, parking space.
The city engineer, he's pretty critical on...
Well, we have two and I...
...anyway, and he's pretty spot-on on making sure there's not gonna be any problems.
I just put, just to, to, to respond to that, the, the design parameters for what's gonna be a 46-room Grand Stay Hotel probably needs an acre and a half, probably. And the site that they have is 3.4 acres. So there will be abilities for onsite drainage control, for modifying existing conditions as they need to. There will be plenty of land area here outside of the building and parking lot to do that. It's a pretty good-sized site.
Yeah.
The public can speak? The public can speak?
Well... Since, since there is no, no one from the public here to speak, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. That brings us to discussion item, resolution two thousand sixteen dash eight, Southview Acres. Do I have a motion?
Everything looks fine to me. As we go further along, the staff's pretty well going to take care of any little issues or the engineers.
I think that's a motion. I think that's a motion by Mr. Price.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second Mr. Price's motion.
And I've got a second by Mr. Daniels, right?
Correct.
Good, good. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to number eight, which is planning commission member comments. Well, I got one. There's kind of a, a fairly, I, I feel it's a significant problem. And that is, uh, that Lawrence Meets Bridge. I, personally, I love it because, um, you know, it's one way to get to the other side of town when there's something, you know, busy going on. But the issue that I have is I have literally seen three to four minivans, SUVs, pickups, and cars on it at a time. And this is around school time.
Are you talking about the bridge?
Yeah. No, no.
Which bridge?
The, the Lawrence Meets Bridge, the wood one.
Yeah, the little old antique bridge there.
Right, right. Well, here's, here's the deal. I think some of these people are really bad at math, because... Yeah. Five tons is ten thousand pounds, for, for anybody that doesn't know. But, eh, you know, a, a full-size pickup is going to run about six thousand pounds. Now, that's six thousand pounds before you go filling it up with people.
Soon as they try adding a ton, they die too.
Once you start filling it up with people, it's, it's a whole different thing. But, uh, I guess the problem that I have is we have a sign that says one vehicle at a time. But the problem is, is that if you have two vehicles that hop on, now you got two vehicles. Now, they may not by themselves exceed this ten thousand pounds. But once that next vehicle hops on, now the person in front that got on there thinking they were by themselves doesn't have a choice but to be on that bridge with, you know, these other people. Now, I, I had a kid that followed me, and he, I could tell he was going to get on the bridge. I actually stopped my car. I got out. I went out and asked him if he saw the sign saying one vehicle at a time. He said, "It's not really just like a one lane, but it's a one vehicle at a time." He just kind of looked at me like he didn't care. Now, now, here's the deal. His car and my car, I'm, I'm fairly certain that that wouldn't by itself cause a problem, because I've seen three or four minivans, SUVs, whatever on there. But the problem that I have is that these, these moms that are driving their kids to school, normally if you were to ask any one of them, they would tell you that they're very concerned about their children's safety. But if you're hopping on a bridge that's designed for a maximum of ten thousand pounds, you're not doing your kids or yourself any favor. The other thing that we have is that when we exceed that limit regularly, say, before and after school, which is when I usually see it, but really four, three, four large vehicles, it's, it's not what that bridge is designed for. If this kind of keeps up, I'm guessing that's why we've had extra maintenance on this bridge lately and a lot of, you know, shutting it down and stuff. I don't know what we can do differently, but I think it's definitely something that, that we need to make the public a little bit more aware of. Cause I, I do believe that these moms driving their kids to school, if they had any idea they were really exceeding the limit of that bridge, I don't believe they'd do it. But currently, they look at it and they go, "There's nobody on the other side of the bridge. We're all trying to get to school right now, just saving us all some time." But that fifteen or twenty seconds isn't going to be worth it if that bridge is sitting in the river. Well, and like I said, it, the only time I really noticed that thing getting that full is, is normally like before and after school. But you got to figure, we've got a lot of young drivers too. They, they don't pay attention to gross vehicle weights and things like that. But, uh, and I don't know what we can do to fix that, you know? But I just, I just know that a full-size pickup is roughly six thousand, sixty-six hundred pounds by itself, without even the occupant, or occupants. But, uh, but when you start taking all the SUVs, now the SUVs are a pretty big deal lately, and those tend to run about the same, six thousand pounds. Two of them is already twelve thousand pounds. But when I start seeing three or four at a time on that bridge at one time, it just, it concerns me. I, I, I don't know. We, we don't need a I thirty-five type of deal in our fancy little antique bridge.
Yeah, it's, it's, is this bridge on the historic register?
Yeah.
I thought it was. So it is protected somehow that way. And it is, then will be, it will be always there then because of that problem.
Well, it may end up being a walking bridge or in a, you know, if...
Yeah, that's what they'll say.
If people can't use it the way it's supposed to be used, that's how it's going to happen to it. And I'd hate to see that, because that, that's a great way, when they got decked the falls, to get to that south side of town. You laugh, but I'm serious.
Fourth of July parade.
Yeah, or Thursday, there, what is that, Thursdays and, what's that one?
Thursdays?
Yeah. Yeah, cause there's a lot of foot traffic there, and you can kind of avoid a lot of that by sneaking through the back.
I can comment on the, on the bridge itself and the status. The city did receive a legacy grant from the State of Minnesota Historical Society to put, uh, plans and specs together for a rehab of that bridge. And we're plugged for federal funding for eighty percent of that bridge for two thousand nineteen. The other twenty percent, the state says they have also plugged. There may be some minor gaps in, if there's something that's ineligible for either federal or state. But, so basically, we've got it, got it funded. It'll probably, uh, construction would probably take place in two thousand twenty. But we've just started working on the, uh, just kicked off the program for the, the grant. That was a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars of design work, so.
Jeez. Wow.
And, and in the short term, we've got, uh, somebody that'll be out probably in the next couple of weeks to work on the outside stringers, uh, because they're, you, well, you've seen cones and so forth, they're barrels.
Oh.
To restrict pedestrian traffic. Of course, they move the fence aside and they walk through anyway. But to narrow up to keep the traffic in the middle of that bridge, but...
Right.
Earlier comments, though, I will pass that along to Chief McCormick and...
Well, and the only reason that it concerns me is I, I honestly believe that if these moms understood that, I don't think they'd be jumping on that bridge together. You know, I, I think they'd, you know, it's a great way to take a shortcut to get to school, but I honestly don't believe these, these moms would jump on there with another truck or whatever if they really believed they were exceeding that limit.
Yeah, and maybe Mike could do a story for us in the beacon too, just a quick.
Yeah, I thought about trying to write a letter to the editor or something about it, but I, I just, it's something that I've seen. And, you know, I've seen a couple cars, okay, fine, whatever. But once you start getting three or four, I mean, you're really, even at a car, you're pushing the three tons, you know, in a small car, you get three small cars and you're still pushing.
I did the visual over there two years ago. I haven't drove over that bridge for two years.
Well, I personally love that little bridge, so I'd hate to see it go somewhere, but I just think, uh, we need to do something. You know, I know that it says one vehicle, and I don't know how much more clearer that could be. But, uh, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't understand what, what we need to, to do, but I, I do think that we should try to, to make that kind of known, you know? I mean, all it takes is, you know, two people jump on and say they're close to the limit, but they're not over. You get a third person, those other two, they don't have a choice no more. They're on there with the third vehicle, you know? And then the sign clearly says one vehicle at a time, not, not one lane or one, you know? But, uh...
Yep.
That's the one thing that I had kind of noticed. And like I said, it just kind of seems mostly like it's before and after school that's out. Anybody else have anything? That was enough?
You're going to be, first of the year, you'll be getting a new council representative on the planning commission. I'm off the council as of the first of the year, so you'll have somebody new. It's been nice working with everybody and...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Yep. Yep.
Anybody else have anything?
No.
All right. That brings us to number nine, which is adjourned.
Second.
I've, I've got a, a motion by Mr. Price and a second by Ms. Chernell and, and actually Mr. Hammer. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.